Okay, at 6:30, I'd like to call the September 13th, 2016 meeting of the Milledgeville City Council to order. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
We have a quorum. I'd like to ask everyone to join me as we stand for the prayer and the pledge. Are you here? "Lord be with us in our discussions and help us to be wise in the decisions we make for the good of all of those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. impart your supreme wisdom upon us so that our matters may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today." Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Our first order of business tonight will be awards and presentation. Tonight, we'd like to recognize Mr. O.C. Watson. O.C. is, come on up, please, if you wouldn't mind. O.C. is retired on September 1st after 39 years of service to the city of Milledgeville. Come on over here, please. He's served in several different capacities during his tenure and will certainly be sorely missed. Congratulations, O.C. Got a certificate for you. Y'all, you want to get over there?
He wants to know where to go watch.
Just the gold, he don't care about the water.
Thank you so much.
Did you already say?
I can't tell how jealous I am.
Remember where the hospital goes? Went back.
There's something right about all of them.
Thank you for your patience as we shuffle around this evening. So you've all received copies of the minutes of the August 23rd, 2016 regular council meeting? Are there any corrections? Do I hear a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Motion carries. We do not have any old business on the agenda tonight, so I'll move directly into new business. The first item is a request from the Alpha Omicron Pi Sorority to appeal the Historic Preservation Commission's denial of the sorority request to replace a 14 by 20-inch metal, black metal sign on the property located at 201 South Liberty Street indicating the owner of the property as Alpha Omicron Pi Sorority. The procedure for this appeal will be as follows. I'll first recognize City zoning administrator, Mervyn Graham, to give a report on the request made by the sorority before the Historic Preservation Committee and the decision of the commission. I will then recognize Ms. Kathy Culpepper speaking on behalf of the Alpha Omicron Pi Sorority for her comments. I will then hear from anyone else who would like to speak in favor of granting the appeal and reversing the decision of the Historic Preservation Commission, and I will then hear from anyone that would like to speak in favor of denying the appeal and upholding the decision of the Historic Preservation Commission. At that point, I'll then give Ms. Culpepper an opportunity to rebut. Council members will be given an opportunity to ask questions or make comments. I'd encourage you to speak, but in the absence of time, I'm requesting that you keep your comments to the point and as brief as possible. At this point in time, I recognize zoning administrator, Mervyn Graham, to report on the request made by the sorority before the Historic Preservation Commission and to hear the decision of the commission.
Yes, sir. Good evening. On July 14th, Ms. Culpepper had made a request on behalf of 201 South Liberty Street. She had asked for the 14 by 20 black metal historic sign in front of the home there. The first request was just to read the Greek letters for the sorority, but then at the meeting, she did amend her request to put the original owner's name first, and then she was going to have the sorority letters next. This was denied by the HPC members, and this property is not properly zoned for a sorority use.
Thanks so much.
That was a reasoning for denial?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Graham, do you recall the vote of the commission?
I think it was unanimous.
Unanimous.
No, one, one? Okay. Everybody but one.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Culpepper, if you'd like to come forward and speak on the request made before the sorority?
You don't need to.
I would love for you to, please.
Ms. Graham's comments are all correct except for the vote, and I don't have the minutes, but I think it was three to two with one abstention.
It wasn't three.
Well, then, there's no record, so.
Okay.
I guess you'll just have to take a work for it. We are requesting the sign, just like many properties in the historic district, to put the owner's name on the sign. That's simply all this is about.
Mm-hmm.
Now, this house is owned and leased to three members that live there, just like most of the houses on Liberty Street. They are owned by someone, and they lease those rooms and those properties to college students primarily. So we are no different than most of the people on that street and in that four-block area of the historic district. So all we're asking is for a sign that will denote the original owner of the home, Charles Payne, and the current owner of the home, Alpha Omicron Pi. Any questions?
I don't. Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Culpepper. Is anyone who would like to speak in, anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of the Is there anyone present who'd like to speak in opposition to the appeal and in support of the decision of the Historic Preservation? Colonel Alton?
My name is John Alton. I live at 221 South Liberty Street. As already stated, the area is not zoned for sororities. Therefore, I don't think it's necessary to put sorority letters on the sign when they're not authorized in the area in the first place. And they have been cited several times for unauthorized activities in the area. Not to be nitpicky, but that's not how the property is registered. It is registered Alpha Omicron Pi Fraternity LLC. So to put Greek letters on it is not proper because they're not the current owners according to tax assessment in Baldwin County. The biggest thing is, that is, again, we keep fighting the same problem of sororities and fraternities that don't belong in that area, which you have stated in previous occasions. That area is not for fraternities and sororities, and you've given them an area where they can have fraternities and sororities. It certainly isn't on Liberty Street. So I'm opposed to putting a sign up primarily because they're not authorized there, and it's also not the proper heading for the owner, as listed on Tax Assessment Code. I'm willing to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Ms. Culpepper, any rebuttal of any kind?
No, sir, I don't think so.
Yes.
Is there anyone on council who'd like to make statements? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Do you have to go?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, please.
Basically, until the council resolves the issue about the ownership, I believe the KAs were also denied similar signage out in front previously, even though technically they didn't own the house. And also, as far as these signs go, the typical way that that's done is to follow the entire history of the house, which in this case would be Payne-Rockwell, and then whoever is afterwards. But really, you're basically saying, okay, we got, it's okay to have sororities here and fraternities here. And currently, I don't believe your ordinances allow that. And if you did deny it for the KAs, how can you turn around and do it for this group of people? That's my comment. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Name and address.
Name and address.
Name and address. Sir, do you mind stating your name and address, please?
I'm Hunter McCoone, 125 South Woods Street.
Thank you so much. Anyone in rebuttal? And I'll ask anyone on council who'd like to ask questions or make statements.
I'm going to make a statement very briefly. I think in looking at what existing fraternity and sorority cleared residents have gone through and have to go through, and what the code of ordinances states that anyone has to go through to be recognized as a fraternity or sorority house, then I think that signage as such tends to lend a connotation to the fact that we are allowing a sorority or a fraternity to dwell where it has not been approved. And I think that is, if I may speak to Ms. Culpepper directly, we have the way to go about in trying to do something about that would be to come before council and planning and zoning and go through the proper channels of trying to get the zoning changed to a special purpose.
May I ask a question of the city attorney, please? Attorney Jordan, what precedent or regulation as part of the code that is directly related to the placement of such a sign would limit the content of the sign? Is there anything in the ordinance that would limit one's ability to place whatever they wanted on such a sign?
What would be placed as far as the sign, the ordinance does not address that. The guidelines that have been adopted by the Historic Preservation Commission is what governs what can be done to the exterior of the properties, to signage, and so forth. So it's actually their own guidelines that they have adopted. They have amended them from time to time, but they have, those guidelines have been in place for many years, dating back to probably the late 1980s when the Historic Preservation Commission was first established here in Milledgeville. It is established pursuant to a state law, but the guidelines and the rules or so forth are what the body themselves develop and adopt.
Yes, sir, and I would imagine that that would be mostly regarding the style, the size, the placement, et cetera, of the sign, but is there any determination in those codes or guidelines regarding the actual content of a sign?
My understanding, I don't have the guidelines in front of me, but my understanding is that, as has been spoken by a couple of folks that have spoke here tonight, that the ownership and the succession of that ownership is typically what those historic signs provide.
So that is to say that there's not anything that specifically regulates what one may put on a sign placed in front of their property?
Well, we have, you know, we have a sign ordinance that does regulate signage, and then within the historic preservation district, there are specific guidelines with regards to all of that.
Yes, sir, and as part of the HPC guidelines, my understanding is that it can determine what type of materials, its placement, its size, but there is nothing in our ordinance that I'm aware of that regulates the content of a sign. I would imagine that would fall under a First Amendment point.
I'm sorry, the guidelines with respect to the historic preservation and their practices have addressed that.
Have addressed specifically the content?
Yes, the content of those historic preservation signs, those black signs, are to reflect the succession, the original owner and the succession of ownership since the original owner.
Is that something that could be produced for our review?
Yeah, you can review the guidelines. Ms. Graham can provide you with a copy of the guidelines.
Ms. Graham, is that something that could be made available to us, perhaps for a determination at a later date of the applicability of this?
So online. See your notes.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you questioning the availability of the exact name of the ownership of the sorority or as opposed to the Greek letters? Or are you just?
Well, it just sounds to me, sir, like we're making this determination based on the content of the signage as opposed to its placement, its style, et cetera. And I think that that is more appropriately what any signed ordinance would be related to, would be its placement, its style, et cetera, and not necessarily the content of any sign.
Colonel Alton, do you know of anything in the HPC guidelines that specifically speak to?
All signage in the historic preservation guidelines do address content. There are only so many things that you can put on the sign, and it applies to the downtown businesses and to the residential section. So it does give them some leeway. It is not as specific as it probably should be because it needs some guidelines, some latitude for the HPC to be able to make judgments, whether it applies correctly to this case for judgment or not, but there are specific guidelines of what can and cannot be put on the sign.
Right.
Across the district and the residential.
Is your objection mainly coming from the fact that it's Greek letters or it's just the ownership of the home?
I guess both. Again, I don't think you should advertise or put on a sign that a sorority is here when a sorority is not allowed to be there. And what you're doing, in some cases, I think it's already said very well, is you're authorizing them by just allowing them to have something, and that's my main objection. If they go through the process, get approved as a sorority, that's a whole different case to be in the judge, but right now, I don't think that's the question.
Good. Thank you, sir. Any other questions or statement from council? Anyone?
I think the perception is greater than the reality, and the perception lends itself to that this is a situation that we have reversed on and we're allowing, you know, it's to me no different than putting up a sign, a banner, or whatever, that would tend to lend one to think that this is where a fraternity or sorority would be. As far as, in everything that I've looked at over the years in HPC, there's latitude, like John has said, but I think that latitude is also governed a lot by precedent that has been set over a period of time. And while you don't have specifics in some regards, and especially into content, I think that you have a precedent that you have, that can be seen throughout the historic district. And that's not to say that precedent can't be changed, or that, you know, that members, as they come and go, do not have different feelings and things of that nature, but I think that's where the generalization becomes into a specific situation.
Getting a horse with a cart, kind of thing.
I have a statement. I'm a part of Alpha Kappa Alpha, which is aka sorority, and when we have a home or a house, that's saying that that is the aka home. We have designated an area for sorority and fraternity, and I feel as though out of fairness, we need to keep the sorority and fraternities in the areas that we designated. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we've kind of passed the, but please, come ahead, come ahead.
I am Sherri Malone, and I was acting chair at HPC on the night of July 14th. And the reason that, in speaking with the people, the reason it was voted down was because we were trying to be respectful to single-family homeowners, knowing if I owned a home there, I'd be a little bummed out if all of a sudden it was turning into sorority or fraternity row. So as a result, that's kind of why we did it. We just wanted to be fair to single-family homeowners, and if it gets rezoned, we don't have a problem with it, but until that time, we felt like it wasn't fair.
Got you. Good deal. Yes, sir?
I know you're probably not aware that I also served for a number of years, and I also served as chair of the HPC. And one of our broad guidelines was set.
779 Sussex Drive.
And I wasn't mentioning, not that, you know, a big thing, but if HPC sets the standards that this is not the area for sororities and fraternities, then you don't advocate them by signage or any other measure. So you'll be actually doing two things. One, you'll be going against the standard if you were to not uphold the decision, and two, you haven't legally said we're going to have fraternities and sororities in this area, and you're tending out to saying, yes, legally, you can have those there. I mean, you have signs out front. By going to McDonald's, I expect it to be McDonald's. So, you know, you're basically saying, we're open to business for sororities and fraternities.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
With all due respect to everyone involved, the president has already been set for that area of the city. One is that there are already several signs listing the ownership, I think you called it the succession, of the property. That's already happened, happening all over this town and historic areas, including that four-block area that was rezoned after ownership of this house took place. After. That ordinance was changed after this house was purchased. And the other is that in that area, the president has been said that people own those homes and lease them to college students, and that is what this is. The fraternity that owns the home is leasing it to free college students.
One correction, Kathy, that area hasn't been rezoned.
It was changed by ordinance to be a special, I forget the exact terminology, but a special historic area for that four blocks on Liberty Street. I forget what the terminology is for that, but it was changed, I think in December of 13, this house was purchased in, I believe, October 13.
We designated a four-block area which encompasses Clark, Hancock, Jackson, and Montgomery, with McIntosh and Columbia coming up through the middle of all that.
What the change was, was that you no longer could apply for a special exception in any area of SF1, SFR1 areas within the historic district. Council created an overlay that designated the area that you are talking about. The recourse now for someone interested in establishing a sorority or fraternity in any area that is not currently within the overlay is to seek an expansion of the overlay. And we actually have one of those, we actually have a couple of them pending at this point that were addressed at planning and zoning last night. So that is the, that was the change, in an effort to designate a particular area as the overlay for fraternities and sororities, that change was made. So that is the change that I assume is being referenced here.
Any other comments from council? Anyone else? At this point in time, I'd like to entertain a motion on the appeal.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we deny the appeal and oppose what the historic preservation. Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. I think we've already discussed it. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Nay.
Motion carries. The decision of Historic Preservation Commission is upheld. I will now ask the clerk to provide a first read of ordinance 06, 1609013 by caption.
This is an ordinance to amend an act creating a new charter for the city of Milledgeville approved December 15th, excuse me, 1900, as amended by adding at the end of Section 3, the following, and also amending ordinance 0-1303-002, passed and adopted March 12th, 2013, and March 26th, 2013, and the property is described as being addressed as 102 Garrettway Northwest, Baldwin County, Tax Map M54, Parcel 32. Property is further described in Exhibit A.
Thank you, sir. This is scheduled to come back before council, I believe, at our October 25th meeting. I'll now ask clerk to provide a first read of ordinance 01609014 by caption.
Conduct the first reading of an ordinance amending the charter to accept approximately 0.574 acres of land into the corporate limits of the city of Milledgeville with a zoning of CC Community Commercial. The property is located 137 Jacqueline Terrace Northwest, Tax Map M54, Parcel 031A, and presently owned by Avant Foods Incorporated.
And this is also scheduled to come back before council on our October 25th meeting. Rolling right along, I want to ask clerk to provide a first read of ordinance 01609015 by caption.
An ordinance to levy and assess taxes for the support of the mayor and alderman of the city of Milledgeville for the tax year 2016, and to provide for the collection of the same.
All right, having heard that ordinance, do I hear a motion to adopt?
This is the first read.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is the first read. I'm sorry. And is this scheduled to come back on the 25th as well?
The next council meeting.
Next council meeting?
That has to be advertised for how long?
It has been.
It already has.
We had to advertise.
Come back before our next council meeting?
Yes.
Sorry about that. At this point in time, I'd ask clerk to read Resolution R1609026 by caption.
A resolution of support for Habitat for Humanity of Milledgeville and Baldwin County.
Having heard the resolution, do I hear a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ask clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll ask the clerk to read Resolution R1609027 by caption.
To authorize a service agreement with Aramark to provide uniforms to the employees in the wastewater treatment plant.
Having heard the resolution, do I hear a motion to adopt?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ask clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll ask clerk to read Resolution R1609028 by caption.
To authorize a loan agreement with the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority to accept funds from the drinking water state revolving funds to purchase and replace the high-service pump at the Hamm Water Treatment Plant, to replace a chlorine weight scale and chlorine cylinder hoist at the James Ball Water Treatment Plant, and all related appurtenances to make the system operational.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question about that. On further, in this resolution, it says that we're to accept the grant required for the city of Milledgeville to enter into a loan agreement with Georgia Environmental Finance Authorities, and then underneath there, it says that we have an agreement is hereby attached in reference duty incorporated and made a part of this resolution. And the only thing that I've got is the resolution. Does anybody else have anything? I mean, we don't know what the cost is. We don't know anything.
I could provide that, but it was so lengthy that I did not make.
And just to give you a quick, right, it's a loan from GFO, it's for $530,000, and it's at.
And it's for GFO?
Right, and it's 0.81% interest.
Point?
0.81% interest.
Can any of us piggyback on that? I borrowed some of that money.
Well, I just didn't know. I just didn't know, and before I voted, I wanted to know at least.
And we have it, both has it in the clerk's office.
And would, do you like me to copy you on it? For you to review?
No, as long as I know and I've got the information that I need to vote, then I'm okay.
About forty or fifty pages.
I don't like to vote unless I have the thing I need.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Excuse me?
We don't have a motion and a second.
I'd make a motion that we approve the resolution as read.
Second.
I think we started discussion.
Okay, start discussion for you.
Prior to.
I'll ask clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. I'll ask the clerk if he would read Resolution R1609029 by caption.
To authorize an agreement with Skyline Construction Services Incorporated for roof repairs and replacement on the City Hall East Annex Building located 127 East Hancock Street.
I need to ask about this one, too.
Let's get to the discussion phase.
Okay.
So you've heard the resolution, do I hear a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, and any discussion?
Yes, I would like to know the.
This is the, and that's East, next building. We have serious roof problems there, and this is a repair. It was properly beat. Skyline roofing was a little better, and the contract is for $30,000, but we are negotiating that contract down.
So y'all are still in the negotiation?
We're still in negotiation, but we're going down. So what you are proving is the current contract, and it's for $30,000 and some thirty thousand.
So we know it won't go over there?
We know it won't go over there, and we fully expect for it to go maybe somewhat down.
Okay. Okay.
Got a contract with a guaranteed maximum of $30,000. Any other discussion? Any other questions? I'll ask clerk to call the roll.
That was thirty-plus thousand dollars. I didn't see the exact figure, it's thirty thousand and something, not thirty-one thousand.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Maybe I should say less than thirty-one thousand.
Plus or minus thirty thousand dollars. I'm sorry.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Motion carries. One more resolution. I'll ask clerk to read Resolution R1609030 by caption.
To designate Black Heritage Plaza Shindig as a community festival sponsored by Main Street Downtown Development Authority, to permit public consumption of alcohol beverages in open containers while upon public streets or recreation areas, to establish a control zone within the festival, to reaffirm the rules designated by the Community Festival ordinance.
Having heard the resolution, do I hear a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is this square right here, Mr. Jarrett, where the control?
The area, hey, are you here? The area will be, North Wayne Street is actually, will be on McIntosh, but North Wayne will be a boundary, and I don't think we actually go to Wickerson Street. We're going to the Park and Dick. Park and Dick.
From Wayne Street down to the interest of the Park and Dick, all McIntosh.
Or half a block of.
What the block is showing, Ms. Walden, is the whole Black Heritage Plaza plus the area.
Yeah, that's what I saw. Okay.
So, so what's the name? Is that our building doing a lot of LIX?
It's a combination of Allied Arts, Main Street, and one other entity.
The Community Foundation.
Community Foundation.
This is, I remember the check presentation we did a couple of times in meetings ago. This is the event that's part of that check presentation, that Community Foundation is taking.
Awesome.
And purpose of the event is to show the new furniture and that kind of thing, that the big plaza that the Community Foundation is also pushing.
Good.
And I want to say awesome advertisement, whoever came up with the town.
I put flyers in all of y'all's folders, so if you have.
It's awesome, I like it.
See y'all down there next Friday night.
Kind of forget what McIntosh used to look like, don't you?
Wow.
Town is changing. All right, so we've got a resolution. Do we?
Ready for vote.
We have a motion and a second. We ready for vote? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Motion carries. We do have one alcohol license application to consider tonight, and I'd ask clerk if he would present the application by caption.
This is for Martin Conan, on behalf of Conan Brothers Management LLC, doing businesses for Barburitos in Milledgeville, and this is for an alcoholic beverage catering license.
I see where he already owns a license, so he's just asking for the catering.
Catering, yes, yes, ma'am.
You've heard the application, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I hearing none, I'll ask clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
And that motion carries. Moving on, we've got one board appointment that I'd like to ask council to approve, the reappointment of Ms. Jacqueline Larkin to serve on the Milledgeville Housing Authority Board of Directors. I hear a motion to confirm this appointment.
Mr. Mayor, that's solely your appointment under state law. That does not require confirmation.
Cool. Counsel.
First thing you've been able to do by yourself.
We don't have to.
Got a bubble chest on that. Rephrase that. I'd like to appoint Jacqueline Larkin to serve on the Milledgeville Housing Authority Board of Directors. So, hope you all are happy. The last item on our agenda tonight is a closed session to discuss a real estate transaction. So at this point, the chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we've been moving into closed session for a few minutes, hopefully, and we'll reconvene shortly. Thank you. I'd like to call the September 13, 2016 City Council Meeting back into order and ask clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Council did go into closed session to discuss real estate transactions. No decisions were made tonight. One other thing, not only the agenda, but Mr. Atkins has asked if he'd make a brief presentation and.
I'd just like to tell you that Lawson Lawrence and myself, our first endeavor is to publish the.
He's got your name in.
Edwin Atkins.
Pardon?
Edwin Atkins, and the founder of the Friends of Central State Hospital, which is going to reach 7,000 members soon, and our first fundraising effort from Lawson and myself is to have this coloring book and historical notes and quotes, which we're selling on Amazon and eBay, and once the cost of the book are covered, any remaining money will be put aside for events at the Pecan Grove by Friends of Central State, such as we would like to have a pecan festival every year, we would like to show movies in the Pecan Grove, or concerts, or whatever we could do. So I wanted to give you a copy.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
And our mission statement is on the back, if you care to know exactly where we stand. We are having an exhibition in Macon for a week. We will be at the Book Fair in Milledgeville on Saturday, and we will be part of the Central State events on Thursday, the 29th.
Thank you, ma'am.
And this is for this lady.
Okay.
So just wanted you to know that we're still trying to help Central State, and I hope that you enjoy the book, and if anybody wants to buy it, it's $15, and it's on Amazon, and.
Thank you so much.
It'll be local, if I can find some people.
We appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. One other thing, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that the Black Heritage Plaza Shindig, it's going to be Friday, September 23, down just behind Allen's Market, from 6 o'clock to 10 o'clock, so bring your family out and enjoy a well-organized get-together.
And I just wanted to add that even though we're doing the Macon exhibit for a week, Allied Arts is interested in the same kind of thing in October, or whenever they can schedule it. So we're not, it's Macon and Milledgeville together.
Thank you, sir. There being no other business to conduct tonight, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Hearing no objection, we stand adjourned.